This is a zoning board meeting of October 16th, 2025. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice that this regular meeting of the zoning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. Board members, applicants, professionals, and members of the public, please speak directly into the microphone so our recording secretary can properly process minutes. Applicants and professionals, please fill out the sheet on the table when you've completed your testimony. Okay, would you please call the roll?
Yes. Cheryl Pathia?
Here.
Richard Protasnik?
Here.
Basim Faradis?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Here.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
Robert Shepherd?
Here.
Faraz Khan?
Here.
Michael Dougherty?
Here.
Kunai Lakai?
Here.
Javdu Singh? Robert Thomas?
Here.
No minutes, resolution for the Bounce Air Adventure Park, ZBA 2500019.
Mr. Chairman, the eligible members to vote on this are yourself, Mr. Shepherd, Mr. Furtis, Mr. Rich, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Dougherty, and Mr. Lakia.
I'll move it. I'll second.
Could you repeat that, please?
The motion was made by Mr. [inaudible].
Gary Rosenthal.
And the second by Vice Chairman Shepherd.
Okay. All right. Basim Faradis? Basim Faradis?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
Here.
I mean, yes.
Robert Shepherd?
Yes.
Michael Dougherty?
Yes.
Kunai Lakai?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Seven in favor and not against, motion passes.
Okay, hearings tonight. JC acquisitions LLC, ZBA 2500020, D1 use variance, primary final major site plan with C variances in which the applicant's applying to develop the site with an outdoor storage facility, 945 Route 27, Somerset Block 88.01, Lot 7.01, in the B1 zone. This is carried to November 20th. If you're here for that, will not be heard, right? November 20th, no further notification. Somerset Bible Baptist Church, ZBA 250004, C and D variances in which the applicant's asking permission to build a one-story, 35-foot-tall, 8,640-square-foot gymnasium at 42 Cedar Grove Lane, Somerset Block 424.02, Lot 12.02, in the R40 zone. That is carried to December 4th, no further notification. So anyone here for that will be December 4th. Hearing for the business, let's say we will conduct tonight, Houndtown 543, ZBA 2500015. Applicant has requested the board reconsider their D1 use variance in which they were asking permission to operate cannabis dispensary at 1695 Amwell Road, Somerset Block 386.04, lots 36 to 38, in the R20 zone. We were supposed to have this reconsideration last week. The applicant's entitled to have a full board of seven people who are eligible to vote, which we didn't have for this application. So it was moved to this week, and we do have a full board eligible to vote. Now, this is a different process than usual. Do you want to lighten us a little bit?
Mr. Chairman, just for reference, the applicant was denied at the August 8th, 2025 meeting. The vote was four in favor, three against. However, for a D use variance, you need five votes, so the motion failed. The applicant has the right to seek reconsideration of the board's decision and has applied to do so with the caveat that there is a need to supplement the record relative to the application to indicate why the applicant believes the board, with additional information, should, for lack of a better phrase, reconsider its prior decision. Now, the board can still, at the end of the presentation, come to the same conclusion it came to, come to a different conclusion, or no conclusion technically, but I would not obviously recommend same. It is the applicant's obligation to provide additional information. My understanding is that Mr. DeLuca has provided previously to all of you a letter dated September the 5th, 2025, at least to Ms. Woodbury, who is not here this evening because of health, for a reconsideration. That, by the way, in and of itself does not suffice as testimony. He is going to have to put additional, he's going to have to put witnesses on. Some may be the same, some may be different, with new information in an attempt to have you reconsider the decision you rendered on August the 8th. Until the presentation of the reconsidered material is concluded, the board will take no action. Once it is concluded, the board will take an action, and ostensibly, the request will be a motion for the board to reconsider and approve. But we'll get to that when Mr. DeLuca is done telling you his story.
So there's two votes by the board?
One. One, the board vote will be twofold. The board vote will be to reconsider the application. If the board chooses to reconsider the application and grant the approval, it will be one vote. If the board chooses to reconsider the application and turn the reconsideration down, the second vote will be to adopt a memorializing resolution that the board memorializing the actions of the board on August the 8th. That'll be the second vote, if there is a second vote.
May I just ask one point of clarification?
Yeah.
So, obviously, Mr. Bernstein, as you're aware, and perhaps this board is aware, the reconsideration procedure is not explicitly spelled out in municipal land use law. So there is some leeway that boards have across the state of New Jersey to adopt reconsideration procedures. When we had previously discussed with Mr. Brian Hack, who was the board counsel at the previous meeting, it was our understand, and I'm not pushing back, I just wanted to clarify, it was our understanding that there would be an initial vote whether to reconsider, which it was our understanding would require a bare majority, and then we would proceed with a reconsideration hearing.
Then?
And then that would be on the D1 use variance, really, presuming that reconsideration is approved. Then there would be rehearing, in which case, at the end, there would be the D1 vote, which requires five out of seven.
So in essence, the first vote is a vote whether the board will even reconsider the application.
That was my understanding.
And my question is, are we involved in entertaining public input at any point until we get to the second part, if we get to it?
I don't believe you are board public issue relative to the first motion. I think that's a procedural motion and does not require necessarily public input on it. Unless the board chooses to open it up to the public. If it chooses to do so, it does so. But the municipal land use law and the bylaw do not require a public hearing on the motion to reconsider.
Okay. And we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you very much for entertaining that back and forth. It's very much appreciated. So, Chairman, board members, Mr. Bernstein, Mr. Gregory, my name is John DeLuca. I'm with the law firm, Savo Shawk. I'm here tonight representing the applicant, Houndtown 543 Incorporated, once again. As you know, this property that the application is for is located at 1695 Amwell Road. That's designated as Block 68.04, lots 36, 37, and 38, in the R20 zone, where the proposed use is not permitted. This is a residential zone, and we are proposing a Class 5 cannabis retail dispensary. The relief we will ultimately request tonight is a D1 use variance. Before we get to the D1 use variance, as we just discussed, we're requesting that the board grant reconsideration to reopen the record for a limited rehearing and revote on two key issues. Those two key issues are the proximity of this proposed location to other so-called sensitive uses within Franklin Township compared to other dispensaries that are already operating within Franklin Township, and their proximities to so-called sensitive uses. The other issue that we intend to address tonight is the applicant's efforts to identify and evaluate other potentially suitable properties within Franklin Township for this particular establishment, and include the reasons why those alternative sites were determined to be unavailable or unsuitable. So in the interest of justice and for good cause, the applicant respectfully requested the board vote in favor of reconsidering the application and reopen the record for a limited rehearing on these issues. At the prior hearing, when the board rendered his vote, as Mr. Bernstein indicated, it resulted in four yes votes and three no votes. As this board understands and knows, a use variance requires five yes votes. The application was statutorily denied despite obtaining a majority yes votes. As each board member voted, each board member stated his or her reasons for their vote, whether it was a yes vote or a denial. Based on the board member's comments and rendering their vote, it was apparent to the applicant that the primary basis for denial was the perception that this establishment would be too close to sensitive uses like schools and houses of worship, and also the lack of evidence presented concerning the applicant's efforts to open this location, or open this establishment at another location. So tonight, with additional testimony and additional exhibits, we hope to adequately address those two key issues. And to be clear, we're not requesting to start the whole hearing over. There is an existing record, including the applicant's prior submissions and the prior hearing before the board, and that record should still be relied upon on any vote that this board takes tonight. Now, it's our intention to build on that existing record to address the issues I mentioned. Now, that existing record includes all the typical submissions of a use variance application in Franklin Township. It includes the application form, architectural drawings, the boundary and topographical survey. It included a traffic and parking assessment, and all the other items on the variance application checklist. That existing record also includes all the testimony that the board heard during the prior hearing. There were four witnesses at the prior hearing. You heard from Gary Burnett, the owner and operator, proposed operator of the establishment. You heard from Marcus Rosenau, who was our architect. You heard from Rihanna Kirchhoff, our traffic engineer. And finally, you heard from Kevin O'Brien, our professional planner. Now, you may recall, we relied upon a PowerPoint presentation that displayed maps, images, architectural drawings. It had a traffic table and other operational information about the proposed establishment. We had marked that in evidence as A1 at the previous hearing. So for tonight's request for reconsideration, as Mr. Bernstein noted earlier, the applicant did submit a letter dated September 5th, which articulated the request for reconsideration. It explained which witnesses the applicant intended to call tonight in the event of a rehearing, and it also described the facts that the applicant intends to establish through additional evidence. So in that letter, submitted along with it, the applicant identified those additional exhibits and what it intends to rely on in tonight's hearing. And those include Exhibit A2, which is a new PowerPoint slide that we will go through. And if I may digress for a second, are we able to turn on the monitors, just so that the public has the benefit of seeing what's displayed? I know I passed out paper copies of that exhibit, but this way, everybody has the benefit of seeing what we're all looking at. So this is an exhibit we would hope to mark as A2. The next exhibit we would hope to mark is A3, and that's the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Market Modernization Act. It's known as the CREAM Act. I'm holding it right here. Here's a copy of it, and we would want to enter that into evidence, should we have the opportunity. The next exhibit, which would be A4, would be the regulations promulgated by the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission pursuant to the CREAM Act. I have a copy of them here as well, and that we hope would be marked as A4. Moving on, A5 would be ordinance number 4340-21. That was an ordinance by Franklin Township in Somerset County, New Jersey permitting the operation of any class of cannabis business within its geographical boundaries and amending Chapter 112 of the Franklin Township Land Development Regulations by creating new Chapter 346 entitled Establishment of Cannabis Transfer Tax and User Tax in Franklin Township. Finally, Exhibit A6 would be another Franklin Township ordinance, an ordinance amending the code of the township of Franklin, County of Somerset, State of New Jersey, with a new Chapter 92, Cannabis, Regulating Retail Cannabis Dispensaries in Franklin Township. Concerning the witnesses I would intend to call tonight, there would be three witnesses. One new witness you did not previously hear from, his name's Edward Lanetsky. He's the applicant's cannabis consultant. He is an expert in the cannabis industry throughout the country, not just the state of New Jersey, but he would provide his credentials to you and why he's considered a cannabis expert, and he would testify and explain about the proximity to uses and the state's regulatory scheme around proximity to such uses. I would also recall Mr. Gary Burnett, the owner and operator of the establishment, who would describe his efforts that he undertook to find other suitable locations and why those locations turned out not to be suitable. And then I would also recall Mr. Kevin O'Brien, our professional planner, who would explain why this new evidence bolsters and satisfies the positive and negative criteria under the municipal land use law, as is required for D1 use variance. So with that in mind, while we're still in the request for reconsideration portion of tonight's hearing, I would like to briefly call Mr. Edward Lanetsky and Mr. Gary Burnett, so you can hear from them directly, just a little bit of a preview of what they would testify to during a rehearing. So if I could call--
Wait, wait. I appreciate that you've sort of like thought this all through, and you've been ready to go here, but I'm, tell me again what Exhibit, Exhibit 3 is the CREAM Act?
Yes, Exhibit 3--
What's Exhibit 4?
Exhibit 4, so this New Jersey state legislature adopts statutes, and sometimes those statutes create regulatory agencies. In this case, the CREAM Act created the New Jersey Cannabis Commission, and Exhibit 4 are the regulations that that commission promulgated.
And we need to introduce that entire document?
I'm not asking that the board review this entire document. I'm asking that it may be made part of the record, and I think Mr. Lanetsky would provide testimony based on these documents. He's thoroughly reviewed these documents, and he's formed an expert opinion on the regulatory scheme for cannabis in the state of New Jersey, and why our proposal fits within that regulatory scheme.
Okay, I get it now.
So if I could call Mr., we'll start with Mr. Burnett. We might change up the order slightly. If reconsideration is granted and they are allowed to give their full testimony, but Mr. Burnett is the face of this operation, he's the owner and operator, so if he could be sworn in to give you a brief testimonial preview.
Mr. Burnett, would you raise your right hand, please? The limited testimony you are about to give, and I underline the word "limited," is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
So help me God.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, please.
Gary Burnett, B-U-R-N-E-T-T.
Mr. DeLuca, I again remind you, and based on your presentation, limited.
Yes. So, Mr. Burnett, if you could give the board a brief preview on what they will fully hear during a rehearing, assuming they grant reconsideration?
Perfect. Thank you. Good night to the board, Chairman, members of the zoning board. My name's Gary Burnett. It's certainly a privilege to be before you again and to call Franklin Township my home for over 17 years. During this time, as a Franklin resident, I've dedicated myself to positively contributing to this community, both through my personal efforts and financial investments. I've invested hard earned savings to purchase a home here, establish my business, and I'm here because I believe in the potential and the future of Franklin Township. However, I'm here to bring you, bring to your attention the significant challenges that I faced in trying to locate suitable real estate for my cannabis business. I've diligently searched and evaluated multiple properties, only to find that the options are limited, often not compliant with zoning requirements, there are restrictions due to federal mortgage guidelines, or simply not available, not within my budget due to the green tax. The real estate market for this purpose is highly competitive, and it's restrictive, and it makes it exceedingly slow and difficult and time-consuming to secure good property. Despite these challenges, I'm pleased to say that I found a favorable landlord who's willing to work with me and accommodate my needs. This possible relationship would not only help overcome some of these obstacles, but ensure that I can operate reasonably and in accordance with all regulations, contributing positively to Franklin Township. That is my goal. Beyond overcoming, beyond this ongoing efforts to establish my business, I continue to be actively involved in supporting local causes, such as the Franklin Food Bank Golf Outing, the Tour de Franklin, which is only building on my years of coaching Franklin Township recreational soccer team. I've been involved. These efforts reflect my genuine commitment to fostering a stronger and more positive community. I respectfully ask you to consider not only the hurdles I've encountered in trying to find an appropriate location, but also my sincere dedication and positive contribution over the years. My actions are driven by a genuine passion to be a responsible and active member of Franklin Township. I humbly seek your understanding and compassion as I present my case today, trusting that my intentions and efforts are rooted in the best interests of this community. Thank you.
Thank you. If I could now call Mr. Edward Lanetsky.
Mr. Lanetsky, raise your right hand, please. Testimony, the limited testimony you are about to give. Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
State your full name, spell your last name for you, the record, and your qualifications.
Of course. First name is Edward E.D.U.A.R.D. Last name is Lanetsky, L-A-N-E-T-S-K-I-Y. A cannabis compliance and operations expert with a focus on retail, but up and down the supply chain. I've operated and helped companies, large and small, across the country in at least 10 states. I've helped many applicants with their licensing application, meetings such as this. I've dealt with many state and local regulators, municipal level, at the regulatory level, across the board, and participated in some, helping with some policy writing as well. And I'm here today to help the applicant present their case for their location and discuss the perceived sensitive uses that were brought to attention last time, and present information that was not provided last time about other locations within the township and their distance to perceived sensitive usage, to the schools and houses of worship. And I'm more than happy to go into that much further with the assumption and the hope that the applicant, who's gone to a lot of extent to bring this to your attention, to present you with further information, so we can dive into deeper and to see that his location meets these perceived sensitive uses and compares them to others as well.
So I just have a few more brief comments before I ultimately request the board render a vote on reconsideration. So while the testimony of Marcus Rosenau, our architect, and Rihanna Kirchhoff, our traffic expert, do remain part of the record, we will not recall them as witnesses tonight because the limited scope of the additional evidence that we intend to present would not impact or change any of their testimony or any of the facts or opinions they previously described. So additionally, based on the comments from the board members that we heard when they rendered their vote, at the conclusion of the previous hearing, it was apparent to the applicant that it wasn't a matter of traffic or architectural design why there were three no votes against the application. So to reiterate our request for reconsideration, to reopen the record for a limited rehearing and revote, we want to address two key issues. That's the proximity of other Class 5 cannabis retail dispensaries within Franklin Township to education, to schools, childcare centers, houses of worship, or other so-called sensitive uses compared to the subject property. And then we also want to highlight the applicant's efforts to identify and evaluate potentially suitable locations for this establishment, and then we will describe the reasons why those alternative locations ultimately were not suitable or available. So in the interest of justice and for good cause, the applicant respectfully requests that this board vote in favor of reconsideration and reopen the record for a limited rehearing on these issues. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone who has any questions? Do you want to ask anybody? Anyone have any comments?
Can we see if there's a motion for reconsideration, and then we can have comments from the board?
Yeah. I think we need to, oh, all right. I move that we grant the applicant, Houndtown, a, the right to reconsider the decision previously rendered by the board.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
I think we, I think we heard enough the first time around. I, I think that, I'm not quite sure how the fact that the applicant has been unable to find a site other than the location currently being considered, how that fits at all into our decision as to whether allow, to allow a D1 variance to allow him to put his cannabis business in the location that's currently before the board on this application. And I don't, I'm going to vote no not to reconsider.
Any other discussion? I would just say that I think there's been enough presented that we, you know, at least have an obligation to hear the details and the new information. Doesn't mean anybody has to change their mind. Any other discussion?
Could you just remind me on that address, 1695 Amwell, how far up on Amwell is that?
It's right at, right-- It's right at the corner here of Amwell and Demont.
Oh, okay. That's what I thought.
Do you have, you have a list of who can vote, right?
Everybody's eligible.
Everybody's eligible. Yes.
So this vote will be--
Reconsideration.
This vote is to allow Mr. DeLuca to bring witnesses back, to give you reasons to potentially reconsider your decision.
With a yes vote.
With a yes is to grant reconsideration, no is against granting it, which is basically upholding the board's prior decision.
And with that, Cheryl Pathia?
Yes, I'm saying yes to reconsider.
And Richard, excuse me, Richard Protasnik?
Yes.
Basim Faradis?
Yes.
Alan Rich?
Yes.
Gary Rosenthal?
I'll vote yes.
Robert Shepherd?
No.
Faraz Khan?
No.
Michael Dougherty?
Yes.
Kunai Lakai?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. In reality, actually, one of those, and we'll have to figure it out before the full vote, one member can't, well, all you basically need is, you know, seven, but the vote clearly passes.
All right. I was gonna ask that question, so I appreciate you.
This is a nine, this is a nine-member board, so actually only nine members can be voting.
Well, is it not a seven-member board?
Well, yes, it's seven with four, my mistake. So, seven with four, which means only seven of you have to vote. So, before we call the vote again, I need the roster for a second.
Okay.
I'm gonna call the roll again, folks. I apologize because some of you didn't have the right to vote. Ms. Pathia?
Yes.
Mr. Prokanik?
Yes.
Mr. Furtis?
Miss, but, yes.
Miss, sorry, apologize. Sorry, Batine. Mr. Rich?
Yes.
Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes.
Mr. Shepherd?
Yes.
You're voting, you're voting yes?
No, no, no.
To make sure. Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
I thought I persuaded you there.
No.
Six in favor, one against. The other four members are alternates and in the absence of parties are not eligible to vote. So, the motion does carry irrespective.
Okay. Your, for the...
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for giving us this opportunity to present a rehearing and reconsideration. I'll, I'll keep my opening comments brief. I did prepare a more thorough opening statement, but now sitting here before you, it seems a bit redundant. So, the one thing I do want to highlight in my opening statement, obviously, we are seeking D1 use variance relief. It is for a cannabis retail dispensary at 1695 Amwell Road. No other forms of relief are being sought. The location of this property, as I just noted, is at the corner of Amwell Road and Demont Lane. That site has been a commercial use for over 100 years. So, we put on testimony and exhibits at our last hearing explaining why it's particularly well-suited for this use, a, a commercial retail use. All the other sites on the property are commercial retail uses, so we want to maintain that type of character for the site. So, rather than dragging on any further than is necessary, I'm gonna ask that my first witness, he's already sworn in to testify, but it will be Edward Lanetsky.
One question. We didn't, I didn't think we would have to do it in the first presentation. Do we qualify him now as an expert?
Well, actually, Mr. Lanetsky can't be qualified as an expert because cannabis is not a recognized professional. He can be, he can be called for the purposes of his expertise, but he does not hold a license. He does not have a professional degree. There's a question whether even you and I, well, I'm believing that...
Yeah, I, I understand the distinction that...
So, for the board's edification, more than for yours. He is not the typical engineer or planner or architect that you would see. This gentleman, I believe, is being offered up as an expertise in the industry, and therefore, to the extent he can give you his interpretations, his experience, his knowledge, but he is not a traditional expert in the way you normally would see a presentation, unlike, for example, Mr. O'Brien, who is a professional planner and a licensed to practice in the state of New Jersey, so.
Yeah, and I would concur to the extent that a common question you might hear for, when you're qualifying an expert, is is your license in good standing? Now, it's my understanding that there's no license to be in good standing. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Now, however, could you please explain your educational background to the board?
Yes. But let me, I don't want you to downgrade Mr. Lanetsky's testimony because he's not a licensed professional, but he does not get to be qualified as such, and obviously, the questions you may have and the testimony that Mr. DeLuca is going to have to present will be in a slightly different fashion, I assume, John, than you would normally have for a traditional engineer, et cetera.
Fair enough. So, with that, please explain your educational background.
So, thank you for granting the rehearing. A little bit longer presentation of my expertise. So, by background, I'm a lifetime regulatory compliance expert with over 20 years of regulatory compliance and audit experience, starting out in the financial industry. I finished NYU for my MBA. I was a financial and operations auditor for the New York Stock Exchange, and I worked for a lot of financial institutions and had many licenses, which would have caught up in the financial side. And then in 2017, I changed over to the cannabis industry, specifically on the regulatory side, and have operated within the regulatory side of the business since then by initially starting, building out one of the first, and at that time, one of the largest regulatory compliance departments for a company that was nationwide. I ran the compliance, compliance, like day-to-day compliance as well as licensing. So, read many regulations, state legal regulations, local regulations, analyzed, prepared audits, prepared compliance memos, spoke to many state legislatures about the quality, the quality of the regulations, how to make the regulations make more sense, how to make them easier to understand, and just how to make them in the framework that business operators such as Gary can operate within those regulations in a way that the business is sustainable. So, since December of 2017, I've been fully in this industry, and while there are no licenses per se that can qualify me, that would be recognized, I would like to think that as a regulatory expert, I'm a regulatory expert in this industry as well. And I would like to present some of the information here that we bring to you. So, to start off and go back to a comment before, in terms of the regulations and the state legislation that came through. So, the regulations that come from the legislation, they promulgate what rules various operators such as Class V cannabis retails must operate under. And very frequently, they discuss things such as sensitive uses, how close you can or cannot be to things like parks, daycare facilities, schools, or whatnot. The way that New Jersey issued the regulations and the legislation is they were very intentional in the sense that they wanted to normalize this industry, and they basically said that, in very few words, that wherever general retail can be located, a cannabis dispensary can go as well, because they want it to be normalized. They wanted to remove the stigma. They wanted to avoid the things that are going on anyway in the industry and really focus on legalization of cannabis and normalization of cannabis, just like any other, you know, crop, let's say. So, both the state regulations and then, as a result, the local township ordinance did not place any limitations on where dispensaries can be located within the proximity of other perceived sensitive uses, which is a very common term in the industry across many jurisdictions that are called sensitive uses, just because, you know, we kind of see them that way, right? So, in that sense, just to close that out, we can locate more, more or less within reason wherever we want based on the regulations. But what I wanted to point out is currently where the township dispensaries are located, and if you could take a look at this exhibit here, and there is more information behind it for other locations. We've just highlighted a few here. What you will notice between here and the next slide about this location that Mr. Burnett is looking at is that it is actually much further from these perceived sensitive uses than some of the existing operators right now.
Mr. Lanetsky ultimately, this is A2.
Yeah, this is the second sheet of A2.
For purposes of the board, for those of you who have your sheets, Mr. DeLuca's indicated the second sheet.
Thank you. I appreciate that. For the record, no problem. So, I'm, I'm just gonna kind of go down the list here. Some, you may, may not know some of these names, some of these locations that I've opened up, but, so the dispensary of Somerset, which is, if you're looking at the monitor at the top left, you will note that the lots where they're located on are mere 200 feet away from each other, and door-to-door from the dispensary to the school is 440 feet, door-to-door approximately. If you move, continue to move to City Route Dispensary, they share a parking lot with a church, and they're 100 feet door-to-door. There are other sensitive uses, perceived sensitive uses fairly close there as well, and I can go into that. There's an, in the appendices, there's more information about those other ones. We're calling out some of the, kind of the closest ones. They're more in focus. Herb's Premium Dispensary is approximately 800 feet from New Brunswick High School and 200 feet from a church. Green Eye Dispensary is less than 550 feet door-to-door from Franklin Township Youth Center and is right next to a church, right on the other corner. Timber Five is less than 200 feet from a daycare center, 300 feet from a church, and Theo Cannabis is across the street from a preschool, sapling school, and less than 300 feet from Six Mile Run Reform Church. So, as you can see, there are other existing dispensaries that are within relatively close proximity, what you would maybe call from what is a perceived sensitive use. And the reason they're there is because, based on Franklin Township ordinance, that is permissible, and, mind you, also, they're operating because the state also gave them the license. So, the state qual, reviewed these locations and qualified them to be in compliance with state regulations, since the state's regulations do not call out any distance requirements from a sensitive use. So, I want to pause, see if there's any questions.
I, I just, you know, why don't you continue?
Continue, yeah, okay.
We're gonna call this also A2.
You mean by the board?
Yeah.
Any questions on this page of the exhibit from the board?
So, moving on to the subject site. We just discussed where it is. It's fairly close to here, and we kind of pointed out a few more distances than just door-to-door. But to start there, 700 feet door-to-door from the temple, 1,400 feet from the Sampson Building, door-to-door. So, as you can see, if you're looking at prior numbers provided to sensitive uses such as schools, churches, daycare centers, the, this proposed location is quite a bit further than some of the existing operating locations. Furthermore, if you're looking at just the traffic patterns, you're looking at 700 feet from the entrance on Demont Lane, Demont Lane, and the 1,300 feet on Amwell. So, while we're pointing these out, to go back to the initial notion, is that based on regulations at all levels within New Jersey and Franklin Township, this would be considered a compliant location based on any perceived sensitive uses.
So, the only, the only thing I want to note for the board, obviously, flipping back to Sheet 2, none of these dispensaries appeared before this board, and the reason is they didn't require D1 use variance relief. Obviously, we do require D1 use variance relief, and you'll hear later in the presentation how not only this site, but the surrounding area really is not, not used for, for residential purposes. So, we highlight the proximities of these uses being closer to those sensitive uses, such as schools and houses of worship, and the further distance for our site from, you know, education, daycare centers, and houses of worship. So, with that, my next, unless the board has any questions for Mr. Lanetsky, and he's not going anywhere, if you, questions come up, he'll be accessible, but I would like to call my next witness.
So, Mr. Lanetsky, so the, this site has been approved by the state of New Jersey, and this is the last stop before you have complete approval?
So, that's a, that's a great question. So, the way that, no, sorry, so the way the process works at the state level, once the municipality provides their approval, then you apply to the state, right? So, Mr. Burnett currently has a license, so this would be the location, but from a state perspective, this site would qualify and would be compliant, so it'd really be an administrative process. So, from a sensitive, because as you could see at the other locations, which are much closer in this location to any sensitive use, they receive their state-level approvals.
Isn't that interesting? It's, so you don't get your state approval first, you get your municipal approval first?
Correct.
And then go back to the state?
Correct, yeah. The state application process is, while it's invasive, let's just say, a lot of documentation, a lot of paperwork, a lot of procedures, the municipal approval aspect of it is key. And as you, as the board may be aware, so Mr. Burnett was part of the initial applicants and is part of, once the ordinance was updated to the, was it 18, I believe?
Yeah, they limited to 18 licenses.
Eighteen licenses within Franklin Township. So, Mr. Burnett is part of those first 18 licenses that is grandfathered before the change to the Franklin Township ordinance.
Okay. Since you're really only talking limited witnesses, we won't open to the public until you finish your presentation.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I, I have, I have another question. It, it just comes up because now we're talking about something being grandfathered, and I may not either remember that from the earlier testimony or whatever. What was changed in the ordinance?
So, there was, there was no hard limit on the number of licenses that the municipality could issue.
Oh.
And then they, they did impose a hard limit at 18. Mr. Burnett holds one of those 18.
Okay.
So, I think the term grandfathered might have been used loosely.
That's pretty good. I like it.
All right.
All right.
Yeah, he was grandfathered.
Yeah.
Yep. And so that, that is the nature of that limitation and his, his holding of a license.
Okay. And there's no, there's no limitation issues at the state level. It's only at the municipal level, and the, that, that ordinance now limits the number of dispensaries to 18, but it didn't before, but he's already got one that's in the 18. Okay.
And, and while we're still on Mr. Lanetsky's testimony about proximity, those ordinances allowing for up to 18 licenses, they don't, they don't limit where those licenses can be located. Your zoning ordinance limits where those licenses can be located. That's why we're before this board. So, it's not, it's not a specific regulation against cannabis retailers being in any particular location. It's, we're in a residential zone, even though this has been a commercial property for 100 years and it's surrounded by many commercial uses. That's why we're before this board.
Really, 100 years?
Really. That, that was revealed to me at the last hearing. That was, Mr. Healy put that on the record.
Well, I can wing it back 50 years. I know it was a gas station, among other things.
I have a question.
Any other questions?
Yes. So, to follow up on the restrictions, the fact that there is not, it's only on the, the municipality, local level, put it on the number, but not the location. The reason, and this is a question, the reason that this application was submitted is primarily because it is a non-conforming use.
Correct. If we wanted to open a coffee shop, we would be before this board. If we wanted to open a bakery, we would be before this board.
And all of the other ones that were shown as examples, they were in a location that permitted that use?
That's correct.
Okay.
Go ahead. Next.
All right. My next witness is Mr. Burnett, who was sworn in to testify. You heard before him at the last hearing. He is the owner and operator of the proposed establishment.
Thank you. I want to thank the board for this opportunity and reconsideration of this application. I understand that, you know, this is a challenging topic for the board, but I certainly want to thank you for that opportunity to represent. Look, I understand that this is a very sensitive, all right, topic, and this team has taken a very meticulous approach, as you can tell, stacks of papers. They've taken a very meticulous approach to request this with some deep respect for the community and the values and for the public safety and the integrity of the zoning board. But I'd like to illustrate to you on this slide is a subset of locations we looked at within the township. By no means is this an exhaustive list, but it's enough just to illustrate some of the challenges that we face.
We're gonna mark this A2B.
A2B.
A2B, so I'll start with 120 Cedar Grove Lane.
The next page in your packet, folks.
Probably one of the busiest corners in... Probably one of the busiest corners in Franklin Township. This is where your Starbucks is located, on the corner of New Brunswick and Cedar Grove Lane. Several retail locations at that facility. The landlord will not rent to cannabis, despite the number of vacancies at that complex. 147-153 Pierce. Brand-new complex, houses your Citizens Bank, childcare center, restaurant. The landlord will not rent to cannabis due to their mortgage restrictions, right? Federally, their mortgage will not allow them to rent to cannabis locations, despite the number of retail locations there. Going further to 101 Randolph, there happens to be a liquor store and a bar in that complex. It's fairly new, this is very close to Canal Walk, very same thing, approached the landlord before the complex was fully occupied, and it was a resounding no, we will not rent to cannabis, despite having space in the complex. Several locations along Route 27, 3550 through 27, 3391, again, locations that currently house liquor stores, multiple vacant space within those complexes.
Next page, folks, by the way.
The landlords will not rent to cannabis. So it's clear, just based on this subset that I'm presenting today, right, that landlords have an aversion to cannabis for a variety of reasons, but we would think it's mainly more because of the stigma and the perception of the plant, as opposed to the actual facts. So I'd just like to, you know, just bring a couple points to me to the attention of the board in considering this. Legal cannabis is one of the most heavily regulated industries in the state, with strict restrictions for security, licensing, product quality, employee background checks. This is not an underground venture, this is not an unregulated venture. This is a legitimate, state-supervised business that can stimulate local growth and stability. We heard a lot about public safety and compliance. Contrary to the lingering stigma, studies show that licensed dispensaries are associated with lower rates of neighborhood crime compared to areas where they're in an unregulated market. We're committed to being a model operator that enhance, rather than disrupt, public safety. I'd like to address the stigma, I think that's what brought us here. We recognize that cannabis still carries social stigma from decades of misunderstanding and criminalization. We cannot avoid that. However, it's safe to say that two-thirds of the American population supports the legalization of cannabis, and it's recognized for legitimate medicinal uses, not just recreational, medicinal uses. That includes pain management, PTSD, and seizure control. I am pretty sure, if not some in this room, we have family members or associates who are using this just to have a regular life. Our goal here is to not, is to normalize safe, lawful access in a professional environment, not promote irresponsible use. I'm not an outsider to this town, I'm one of you. I intend to be a community partner that will continue to invest locally and give back. I welcome ongoing dialogue with the residents, faith base, and civic leaders to ensure we align on the community priorities. It is essential. This variance does not conflict, to the best of my knowledge, with the spirit or intent of any zoning ordinance. This proposed location meets all the state and municipal requirements, I think Mr. Lynetsky clearly outlined that, and it does not increase public risk in any way, form, or fashion. The proposed use of this location for this business is compatible with existing commercial activities or retail properties. And finally, I think this variance allows the board to apply reasonable discretion in adopting modern economic activity to zoning codes written before cannabis legalization, which is not a deviation from community standards, but an evolution consistent with state law and economic trends. It's important to underscore that. Members of the board, I'm not asking you for a favor, I'm not. I'm asking for a fair opportunity to operate a legal, regulated business that brings tangible benefits to this community. I understand that stigma and emotions can cloud perception. We've seen it before, it's happening, but the facts are clear, right? Regulated dispensaries are safe. They bring jobs and revenues. They operate with transparency and accountability. I'm ready to be that kind of responsible neighbor, and approving this variance sends a powerful message that this community values both economic inclusion and evidence-based decision-making for over outdated fears. I thank you for your consideration and your commitment to thoughtful governance. Thank you.
Any questions?
Can I go back to Mr. Lynetsky for a question?
Sure.
All right. Being the expert in local, state, federal regulations, laws, can you at all speak to maybe the rationalization for the municipality limiting the licenses to number 18?
I don't want to speak for the municipality.
Of course.
Oftentimes, there are limitations. I'm just kind of drawing on experience across multiple municipalities. It can be anything from business perspective, it can be oftentimes a ratio of people to number of locations. It's a, it's a business that is not well-understood, so I think that is oftentimes one of the main reasons why there is a limit. Because there really, as New Jersey wrote it, it's intended to be just like any other business, right? We're not really limiting how many pizzerias are available, right? This business pays extra taxes than most other businesses, right? There's a specific municipal tax on cannabis, which I think the township does a great job in disclosing how much has been paid by all the operators. So I really, there is no set model as to why or why not a certain jurisdiction, either at the state level or the local level, limited. Perfect examples, New Jersey, California, at the state level, there are no limitations at how many dispensaries there can be, period. Illinois, there are limitations, strict limitations. Rhode Island similarly, Florida similarly. The state promulgates how many licensed operators can exist within the state, period. Sometimes the state, like Florida for example, removes and strips local municipalities from any shape or form of control of how many locations can be within their own jurisdiction. Sometimes i- it really, it really depends. So, there must have been some rationale behind why. Perhaps they were worried about oversaturation, but, you know, really, it's, I think going back to what Mr. Burnett was saying, is that there, there's often a misunderstanding as to how this type of business operates, and the excessive amount of control within the business to ensure that it's safe, and while at the same time accessible, both from a medicinal standpoint and a recreational standpoint. So I'm sure there was a spirited discussion by the members of the board as to why the limitation was put into place, but really from just a pure regulatory standpoint, there really is no rhyme or reason. And the state of New Jersey itself basically did not put in cap for that intent to normalize this business, to allow to operate in any retail location, but they also gave the local municipalities some power to make some of these decisions.
Good, thank you.
I have a question. I think we heard this time and also last time about the medicinal uses and the, you know, the public good for that. So do you have any data on what percentage of cannabis use is for medicinal versus recreational?
Okay, I'll take that. So, sure. So, look, the way I would say, not, the way all programs in this country have started are in the medicinal side. So, you know, tri-state area, you look at New York, you look at Jersey, it always starts on the medicinal side to promote its use. Oftentimes, it starts on the most restrictive, you know, really serious medical conditions where doctors prescribe cannabis, when other things may not be working, or just to help people with some of their ailments, or some of their, you know, I don't want to get into the, the deep and heavier stuff, but all, over time, a lot of times those programs start including some of the things that Mr. Burnett mentioned, which is PTSD, chronic pain, so they start to open, once more information becomes available, to other types of conditions. Then at some point, if the state decides, either by referendum or what have you, to move on to a recreational program, you start to see a shift, right? Because your medical uses, there's going to be only so many people because they have to have a card, they have to get prescriptions from doctors, so some people don't want to go that route because sometimes that's more expensive. You have to pay doctors to see you, you have to pay a fee to the state for your card, so they choose not to go the medical route, they just choose to go, just like buying anything else, they just walk into a dispensary, they purchase it for themselves. In terms of percentages, you know, the, the state releases, sales usually wants to happen, once the program matures, the medicinal side of purchases decreases and the recreational side increases, just because greater adoption, greater exception. And again, the cost to obtain a card and to stay medical, the benefit is not really there for you, because also on the medical side, sometimes the products aren't available because there is also regulations around, maybe what kind of products to be in the medical side, and then vary state to state. So you start to see a small percentage, but what this state is doing is they are trying to promote the medicinal programs, we are trying to push incentives and lower fees. I don't have the exact number for you, but while we continue, I could probably look at it. If I can just, if I could just add one statement to what Ed shared, I mean, the state has prioritized medical patients over recreational patients. It was the first program to roll out in the state, they rolled out medical first and then recreational, and operators, also, if you're a recreational dispensary, you also have to give priority to your medical patients. There are some recreational dispensaries that open, there are specific hours where your medical clients can come in and get service without interacting with the recreational clients. So I think the state has also taken that into consideration, and has asked us as operators to prioritize the medical clients. And if I could add on to that, actually, to even further that, in the earlier phases of this program, there were certain operators, the larger operators that started in the market, where they did not meet those requirements by being opens, because they were medical and recreational, for medical patients for those hours, they didn't keep the hours, they let in recreational patients. They were fined by the state regulatory body that they did not fulfill their obligations to medical patients. And if you were to stop in to the dispensary and spend an hour there, oftentimes, just being in so many dispensaries through the last almost eight years, you won't go for very long, where just somebody walks in, not a medical patient per se, walks in and talks about their medical condition, a condition of a family member, that they're there to buy it for them. It, it's more, much more common than the statistics will tell you, because the only things that the statistics will tell you is how many medical patients are registered and how much medical product was sold, and that is defined by a specific designation within state regulatory tracking systems that, hey, this product here is designated as medical and it was purchased. It will never tell you how many people, regular, day-to-day people, are coming in and saying, "I can't sleep, it is impacting my life, it is impacting my family, what do you recommend? I have tremendous joint pain, nothing is helping me, what do you recommend?" These folks are not registered medical patients, they're not being sold official medical products because they just probably don't exist, and some of these dispensaries now actually, you, I can't, you can't even get a medical license. All the dispensaries that are opening, the newer ones, are recreational only because the medical licenses are for the earlier rounds. So, the numbers are very skewed, and I would bet that they were probably three to five times, just personal, personal opinion, not fact, not record, higher than what actual numbers will tell you, because there's no way to register.
Any other questions? Bring on your planner.
All right, Mr. Kevin O'Brien. So I did, oh.
You can sit down first, Mr. O'Brien. We're in, we're more informal here than other places. Raise your right hand, please. Testimony you're about to give is truth, the whole truth, and nothing but truth, so help you God.
I do.
State your full name, spell your last name for the record, give us your licenses, your education, by whom you are employed.
My name is Kevin O'Brien. I'm a licensed professional planner. I've got almost 40 years of experience in the field. My license is still current, there are no adverse actions against it. Mr. Chairman, if you like, I can go on, but it's up to you.
Okay.
He's accepted as an expert?
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
For the sake of the record, I do want to note, I flipped to the next slide to keep with the marking, I think it would be appropriate to mark this as...
A2...
A2C.
C.
So... So, Mr. O'Brien, in light of the additional testimony you heard tonight, what can you tell us about this site and how it's situated within Franklin Township?
This site is in the R Residential District.
Put your microphone up by your mouth there.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shepherd.
Mm-hmm.
Is this close up?
Yes.
I can make it really...
You don't need to be that close.
Okay. This particular site is in the R Residential District. All of the properties in red on the slide in front of you, excuse me, are also in the R Residential District. At the last hearing, we did discuss how these properties have been identified as commercial dating back to 1925, 1925, on the tax rolls and on township records, as supplied by Mr. Healy. So these are commercial properties, but they are zoned residential, and there's been no change to that in 100 years. When given the opportunity to rezone these properties, for whatever reason, the township decided not to. And yet, all of these properties are non-conforming. So any business that goes in here, and over the many years, I've represented a few of them here, have to come in here for a D1 use variance, because they are non-conforming in the zone. Excuse me. This particular property is non-conforming, and it's got the bike shop and the deli that's been there forever and ever. And before them, the commercial uses at this site, where they're dating back to at least 1925. What this applicant is proposing is taking a portion of that bike shop and making it into a dispensary. And the bike shop will take less space, as well as the basement, and become just a repair So this is an adaptive reuse of that space to another conforming use that's legal in the state of New Jersey, allowed by the township of Franklin, and more specifically, one of the 18 licenses allowed by the township that have been granted already. already. All this license needs is a home. And you've heard the struggle to get a home, not to mention the fact that the state of New Jersey and the United States of America are on different wavelengths. The United States of America banking system labels cannabis a class-one drug. It's not allowed, it's illegal. You can't take cannabis on a federally regulated airplane. You can't use cannabis in the federally regulated banking system. A cannabis operator cannot take out a loan through a federally regulated bank. Excuse me. I broke my can, I forgot my water. So this applicant has a specific and unique hardship when it comes to the financial system. The state of New Jersey says, go, go, go. The township of Franklin says, go, go, go. And not only go, 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 but you're one of our 18 guys, we want you to be here. You've gone through all of our screenings. You've passed our muster, you specifically, Mr. Burnett, and you, Houndtown, the business, have passed our muster. But the United States of America is not in sync with this because the federal banking laws do not allow anybody within the federal regulatory system to put money into cannabis. Mr. Burnett, when he opens his store, cannot take a credit card because they're regulated by the federal government. He cannot access credit. This is going to be a cash business, which is one reason why security is so tight at its premises. So, all of these businesses in the red on the slide in front of you are pre-existing non-conforming uses in the residential zone.
Yeah, but they're not, they're not, they're not all commercial businesses. You've got a, a red space that includes Sampson G. Smith School, that includes the municipal building, that includes a lot of things other than commercial use. So it would be better if you described them in a way that's a little different than that, that actually matches with what's on the paper here.
Thank you very much. So let's call them non-residential.
That sounds great.
And they are still non-conforming. Non-residential, non-conforming uses, and many of these uses in this area are commercial uses, which are different from a school, different from a municipal building, because those are seen as beneficial uses for everybody. And the fact that they're in a residential zone, okay, I think everybody fairly goes along with that. But all these commercial uses, again, pre-exist the ordinance, pre-exist the master plan, this area's been here for 100 years. And all this applicant wants to do is put another business in a place where another business is retreating from, just like all the other cannabis businesses, just like all the other businesses here in Franklin Township. This is an allowed use, it conforms to the township and to the state law. All we need is a D1 use variance to allow to go here. We are further away than many other cannabis uses here in the township from those sensitive areas such as the school. You've already seen the slides showing that other cannabis uses are closer to schools, closer to houses of worship. This one is not. Not only that, but the township says it doesn't matter. The township has no regulations concerning placement of cannabis. The state of New Jersey has no regulations concerning the placement of cannabis. In fact, it specifically exempts cannabis from the rules concerning other uses and allows them everywhere. So a lot of people at the local level and at the state level have said, the use is allowed, and the use is allowed here. There are no bars to it whatsoever at the local municipal and at the state level. If this were a, trying to think of something that's not there, if, if this were a vitamin store, this would still be a non-conforming use and still have to come to you. But if it was a vitamin store, would it be under the same scrutiny as a cannabis store I think that my earlier testimony is still in place, and that found that this use was allowed by the D1 use variance, I'm sorry, met the conditions of approval for D1 use variance, and that we met the three-pronged, three-pronged burden of proof. Come on, computer, help me out. And the three-pronged burden of proof is that we showed you in our last presentation that there were special reasons that were based in the root causes of the municipal land use law. We showed you that this can be reconciled with the master plan and that it met many of the objectives of the master plan, that it can be reconciled with the zoning ordinance, by the fact that this site is specifically suited for this use by virtue of it being a commercial use in a commercial area that's existed for over 100 years. We've shown that the application meets the negative criteria and that there's going to be no adverse impact on any of the surrounding properties or the township as a whole. This is an allowed use. And I would conclude that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. Mr. Tufuka, do you have any questions?
I do not have any further questions for you, Mr. O'Brien.
Mr. Chairman?
Any questions?
I, I have a question as it relates to some of the evidence that was presented tonight, and in particular, the, the fact that the applicant tried to locate this dispensary in some other places but was told for a variety of reasons that they were not welcome there. And I, I don't understand how that particular information is relevant to the D1 variants.
I, I'll, I'll field that question, Mr. Shepherd. So this information is being provided for, to the board in direct response to comments from the board. So while I might agree with you that under the strict statutory criteria listed at section 40:55D hyphen 70D1, I agree. That's not, that's not listed in there. But we, well, I should say, my client, as a member of this community, is concerned with what his fellow members of the community care about and are concerned about. So we wanted to address those concerns specifically. That's why we presented this additional evidence tonight.
Okay, good.
And if I may add, Mr. Shepherd, in that slide where it says that due to mortgage restrictions, that's referring to the federal banking system.
Right, oh, I get that, yeah. That makes sense to me. Now, I have a question really that relates to the earlier application, earlier hearing that we had on the application. And there was a picture of the, the building and how the, this business would look in that building. Can you call that up? No, that's not it.
John painted that this afternoon.
I'm particularly interested in the picture that I saw where they had a, a sign for the business.
So the, the sign that you're seeing, it simply says dispensary?
Yeah, that's, if you go around Franklin and places in general, they, they use, typically, these dispensaries don't really just say dispensary, they use a, a trade name to identify their business. Theo's, for example, or Sparkology are two places down by me. And after I left the hearing and I thought about this, I, I thought that it would be better if the sign said Houndtown or something other than just dispensary on the, on the building.
If I can address, this is simply for illustration purposes, this is not the official name of the business. Once approval is granted, if we're so lucky, the official name of the business will be on the awning, it will not be dispensary.
And what will, what will that name be?
We're considering a name change as we speak, so Houndtown was used during the application process, but before Go Live, we will be doing a name change.
And in the event that any variance is needed for such a sign, obviously, we would come back to this board for the sign.
Yeah, I would be happier if I had some idea of what the name was going to be on the, on the, the place. I'm not particularly crazed out about this, but I, after I left, one of the things that disturbed me about, and I voted in favor, and one of the things that disturbed me was that, just that dispensary sign. But I think that your client has some sensitivity to this issue, and if he, if he means what he says, I'm sure he'll do a fine job and pick a name that's, that's going to be appropriate.
Here, here.
Yeah, I don't think he.
Where, where?
I don't think he's prepared to state what that name might be on the record now, but I will note, the proposal that we included does state that the sign would say dispensary. So if this board were to act favorably and say, it needs to say something other than dispensary, it needs to be a trade name, the, we would obviously have satisfied the approval for the use, but we would be required to come back to have that sign approved.
Okay, okay.
That makes sense to me because I, to piggyback on that, I, I agree that calling it, calling it out as dispensary draws attention to it. So if they don't, if someone going by doesn't necessarily know what it is, it doesn't make them more inclined to go there. So I, that makes sense to me.
We're dealing with the stuff that you were talking about, but we're trying to do it in a, in a soft way.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to speak in support of what he mentioned, you know? I also am pretty close to Theo's and Sparkology. There's no dispensary in there, so.
What he means is that there's, it doesn't say dispensary.
Right. And I, I'll also note, and our cannabis industry consultant, I'm sure can verify this, the, the state obviously regulates the use very heavily, they also regulate the signage very heavily. It, there are strict requirements as to what logos, emblems, and words can appear on the outside of these establishments. So it will not say dispensary. You have that on the record, so if this board acts favorably, that will not be the sign that appears, and whatever sign does appear will be subject to this board's approval.
Actually, we have another application for a sign variance for a dispensary that we're refusing, not, I think it's on the planning board level. The state doesn't allow certain photographs of different, the state very much regulates the content of the sign aside from whether we want dispensary here or not. So it'll have to undergo that approval aside from here. We'll be more interested in, you know, meet the size.
Right, but I, I understand the vice chairman and the other board members' comments about the specific concern about calling out exactly what the use is, and we are receptive to that.
No.
And we'll meet the bulk variances.
Any other questions? That's it for your part?
Yes, we, I have no further testimony or exhibits to present, I would just request that after the public has an opportunity to ask questions and make comments, that I would be granted the opportunity to make a closing statement.
This is the bad opportunity. If there's anyone in the public wants to make a comment or ask a question, come to the mic, give us your name and address. If it's, it's going to be a comment, you'll have to be sworn in.
I think you need a mic.
Okay, I'm Greg Stark, I live five doggy road in Somerset, New Jersey.
Can you spell your last name, sir, for the record?
S.T.A.R.R., two Rs.
Thank you.
You know, although it's interesting, he had trouble locating other locations or other locations that have dispensaries, you know, how close they are to schools or other sensitive areas, I don't think either of those are even relevant to the question. What's before the board here is whether you want to grant a variance right here in Middlebush for this dispensary, okay? That's, it's an independent decision, it needs to rise or fall on its own merits, okay? Not based on how close something else is or how hard is locating the location. I think the key concern I have is, Middlebush is a historic community, is officially recognized as that, okay? And as they mentioned, the businesses are here already, we've got a bicycle shop, you know, a deli, beauty supply, restaurant over here, these things have been here like for 100 years, okay? And fit very well within, you know, historic community. So to me, if someone was applying to say a Verizon phone shop, I would say, you know, that doesn't fit in with a Middlebush, you know, recognized historic site. It just doesn't fit. And I, I would urge him, if he wants to find, you know, a, have a dispensary, that's his business wish, that he can locate another location that's not in a historic town like this, a recognized historic town. If you look at the other dispensaries that are around, they're not located in historic towns like this. So I think this is a big, big change, and I don't think it really fits at all. So I think that's really my major concern, that any type of like business like that just doesn't fit with historic communities. That would be my, my concern. I just wish he would, you know, take an opportunity, I'm sure if he looks around, he can find another site that's not right in the middle of Middlebush that, you know, to open his shop. I'm sure, if you do a little more looking around, you'll find a, a great place, maybe even a better place in terms of, you know, customer access or better traffic flow or who knows what. But I just don't think it fits in a historic town, okay? So that's, that's my concern. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, my name is Tom Armstrong, I live at 127 Sunnyvale Court here in town. I got to know Mr. Burnett through, as a mentor, through the Men's Mentoring Men Program, which he chairs. And I happened to also work in the industry, so we've become close friends and colleagues, become, you know, have come fond of the work that he's doing and the work that he's done, and he's been a big help to me. I would say I've been familiar with the New Jersey industry and, and speaking as to the historic nature, I think there's many towns that are historic in nature, whether you look at Lamberville, Mount Holly, there's many dispensaries that are operating in actually historic buildings, that are designated historic buildings. If you look in. If you look in other states as well, and it's, it's actually a pretty common use in a lot of historic jurisdictions as a, you know, boutique operation. And, yeah, I just, if you look at two of the other things on site, that actually, that bike shop is actually struggling to survive, hence why it's no longer a full bike shop, it's just a bike repair. The bike shop, you know, unfortunately, due to the times and nature, that bike shop, the actual sales have shuttered, and it's just a repair shop now. I know, Mr. Burnett, that was definitely something as he met the landlord, that was something that was kind of a happy marriage as the one business was subsiding. He offered to come in and, and, you know, take a place for this other, other business that had since concluded. And, yeah, like I said, I'm definitely in support of Mr. Burnett and the project. Like I said, he's, he's been a great friend and mentor to me, and, you know, I look forward to seeing his business come to fruition.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Valerie Northey, and I live at 127 Sunnyvale Court, and I was here at the last meeting as well. I know there were some concerns that I know Mr. Burnett did address earlier about safe consumption, and I, I know he also addressed the, the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission. So, just to exemplify a little further, if anyone is interested to look, the New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Commission outlines safe and responsible consumption for use. They outline pregnancy issues. They outline a number of different issues, which speaks to the need for us to be aware that they are in, in alliance with cannabis being safe and responsible. I know one of the other comments early on too was that one of the board members said he was on EMT and saw a number of overdoses with cannabis and from cannabis dispensaries as well. And no overdose, one overdose is one too many. And I know that you have also seen many overdoses with heroin and, you know, and another, other drugs. So, I would think that at least here, when a person purchases any kind of cannabis materials or consumes anything, they have a responsibility to themselves to look at what they're purchasing and take some kind of responsibility so that they can responsibly use and not harm themselves through that use. So, that's all I'd like to add at this point. Thank you.
Okay, any other speakers? Close to the public then, go ahead.
All right, thank you very much, chairman and board members, for your time and your careful attention that you've given to this matter. Tonight, you heard additional testimony addressing the very issues raised at the prior hearing, the proximity to other sensitive uses and the applicant's efforts to identify other locations within Franklin Township where he could cite this establishment. That testimony, along with the exhibits presented, strengthens an already compelling record. The applicant has shown good faith in exploring alternative sites, and for the reasons stated by Mr. Burnett, those sites were unavailable to the applicant. Through the testimony of Mr. Lenetsky, the applicant has demonstrated that other dispensaries in Franklin Township operate closer to schools, closer to houses of worship than this site, and has proven that the subject property is uniquely suited for this proposed use. I'll also note that a board member at the previous hearing noted that there have not been any complaints about the other operating dispensaries within Franklin Township in terms of any illegal sales or any disturbances caused, caused by those operations. So, presumably, you have a responsible business owner here. You wouldn't see any such complaints against this establishment. You also have before you the testimony at the prior hearing, which included the operational safeguards, the modest architectural adjustments, traffic compatibility, public support, and a professional planning analysis that established the variance satisfies both the positive and negative criteria of NJSA 40:55D hyphen 70D1. The law governing this application is clear. The legislator of the state and the legislator that is the township council have chosen not to impose any proximity restriction on cannabis retail dispensaries. For this board to impose such a restriction would substitute its own laws for existing laws, something that a quasi judicial body ought not do. We emphasize that this board's role is a quasi judicial body. It's not a legislative body. Your duty is to evaluate the facts and apply those facts to the existing laws, state statutes, local ordinances, and controlling case law. To deny an application based on standards that are not found in the law would be unjust and unfair to this applicant. As I stated, neither the legislature nor the township council has enacted those proximity restrictions. This is the CREAM Act. These are the regulations that are promulgated and pursued to the CREAM Act. None of them contain these proximity restrictions. These are your local ordinances, and they similarly do not contain those proximity restrictions. I'll also note that there are five wards in Franklin Township. This is a proposal for a dispensary in the third ward. If approved, it would be the only dispensary in the third ward, which would avoid saturation of similar uses in this area of the township or other areas of the township. This site is particularly suited for the proposed commercial use as it's been, this site has been a commercial use for over 100 years. So, although it is a residential zone, it's not really situated within a residential neighborhood per se. The board's duty is to evaluate the application under the facts and under the laws as they exist today. Under those laws and with the evidence presented, it compels the conclusion that the requested variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without any detriment to the zone scheme or zoning ordinance or master plan. So, for all these reasons, on behalf of Houndtown 543 Incorporated, we respectfully urge that you grant the request for this variance. Thank you.
Okay, any board questions, any comments? Maybe get a motion first.
What, what does a motion look like here? What do we do? Do we, do we move to withdraw the previous decision?
It'll be a motion to reconsider and approve the application as presented with all the conditions, including the one this evening and all the prior conditions and requirements set forth in the previous hearing.
I'll second that motion.
Mr. Shepherd makes that motion.
Right.
Is there a second?
I second.
Ms. Bithia, a second.
Is there a comment or a question, anybody? Let's start.
I am calling the roll. Ms. Bithia.
Looked like you were ready.
Are we voting?
Unless anyone has any comments.
All right, call the board, please.
Ms. Bithia.
I am a yes because I believe they made the case. I believe this is a responsible applicant, and so I am a yes.
Mr. Brkanic.
Yes.
Ms. Furtis.
I'm still going to vote no because, you know, in spite of, of the testimony that there are other, you know, cannabis dispensaries that are close, you know, we weren't asked to vote on that. But for this one, you know, although I do appreciate all the, you know, extra effort put in, I don't think in good conscience I can vote that there won't be a detriment to public good, so it's still a no.
Mr. Rich.
Yes, they made all their, they met the burdens of proof, and I, I have no reason not to, not to say yes.
Mr. Rosenthal.
I think the applicant has proven that he is extra concerned about the residents, so I'm going to vote yes.
Mr. Shepherd.
I'm going to vote yes for the same reasons that Mrs. Bithia voted yes.
Chairman Thomas.
I'm going to vote yes also, and I know our attorney doesn't like to hear this, but everybody has stated everything, the justification for this that I agree with all the rest of it.
Mr. Burnett, congratulations. We look forward to seeing you again with your signed application and God knows what else.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Motion to close.
I move that we adjourn for this evening.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Nine, 10.
Motion adjourned.